How long have you had it?
Friday.
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 There's other things.
Yeah.
This is Beloit D S Cars, all right? This week's Friday? This Friday?
Yes.
Noon?
Yes.
Yeah, so far. It's all going so good.
Yes. You are, uh...
Good day, Beth. How are you?
Pretty good.
Other than Smith. Oh, yeah. I got a radio for you Friday morning. We're still...
I got one handy. This is the...
My dear, like your... Give him up on here. All right? Good? My picture.
Okay. Everybody ready tonight? Oh, guess what? This thing isn't working.
How you doing?
I'm doing good. I'm hanging in here, everybody. Hang on a minute. Yeah. It's gonna be good. Yes.
Well, I can't say too much evil. Can't tell you all.
All councilors are present.
Can everyone please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Item three is special orders of the day and announcements. Item three A is swearing in ceremony for city mayor manager Jerry.
At this time, I'd like to ask Jerry to come forward to the podium to be sworn in by the city clerk treasurer. And before Jerry begins, I just want to welcome you, Jerry, on behalf of our Beloit City Council. We look forward to building relationships with you, and we look forward to making Beloit your home.
All right.
So you're gonna raise your hand for me, and I'm gonna read this to you, and then you'll just say...
Gabriel Latos.
Perfect. I, Jerry Gabriel Latos, having been appointed as the city manager for the city of Beloit, County of Rock, hereby swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability, so help me God.
I do. You didn't quite tell me what to say.
So you're gonna sign there, and then I'll sign there, and then I'll give you a copy too.
And if we could have Jerry to just say a few words.
Sure. Um, well, it's finally here, you know? I'm grateful that I am here, standing in front of the council and with the people of Beloit. You know, this opportunity has everything that I was seeking. That is an engaged council, an engaged public, hardworking, top-notch staff. I'm thrilled to be here and excited to get to work. So let's get to work. Thanks.
All right. Welcome here.
Item three B is proclamation 2023-005, recognizing the 18th season of the Beloit International Film Festival.
We will have Vice President Forbeck to read the proclamations, and then she'll have the representatives to come up when she's done. Vice President Forbeck.
Whereas, the Beloit International Film Festival will, for the 18th year, celebrate our community, showcasing the attractiveness of Beloit's downtown and its midwestern hospitality from February 24th to March 5th, 2023. And whereas, hundreds of volunteers will serve as BIF ambassadors, welcoming an international array of artists and visitors. And whereas, we extend our thanks and appreciation to Beloit businesswoman Lindsay Mitchell as she oversees her first festival as BIF board president. And whereas, two-time Biffy Award-winning director Gavin Michael Booth of Windsor, Ontario, will serve as honorary chair, and Biffy Award-winning director and Columbia College graduate Daniel Pico will help inspire artists at all levels as 2023 artist and residents. And whereas, BIF will bring two great classic films to this year's festival in the sing-along event with the rocky horror picture show and the closing classic film with Top Gun. And whereas, BIF will build on its tradition of small, accessible venues in the downtown area with the addition of the exciting new Beloit College Weesberg Auditorium and the powerhouse. And whereas, BIF continues to showcase the creativity, beauty, and people of Beloit to the world. Now, therefore, the Beloit City Council thanks those who have fostered and nourished the Beloit International Film Festival and urges the community to support and enjoy BIF 2023 and to welcome artists and guests to our community presented this 20th day of February 2023.
What a businesswoman. Hello. And if you could both just introduce yourselves and give us a few words.
Thank you. I'm Greg Gerard, executive director of the Beloit International Film Festival, and this is Lindsay Mitchell, our board president. Say hi, Lindsay.
And apparent businesswoman.
We're excited about the festival. It's just a few days away. We're, you know, we've been working hard. Everybody's putting their best foot forward. We've got a lot of great films. You mentioned a couple of them, some super special events. We can use some more volunteers. Uh, we're pretty good on the first weekend, but we need more volunteers, so don't be shy. Sign up. We take council members too. And, uh, and, uh, on behalf of everybody at BIF, we want to say, welcome, Jerry, and you have a free pass to all the films and events that you want to go to. It's on me, okay? All right, so welcome to Beloit. Come and BIF with us. And that goes for the rest of you too. Come BIF with us, okay? Thank you.
And then Greg. Greg. Thank you both. Um, I certainly enjoyed the BIF reveal party along with my colleagues, and so we are so excited to have these films share so many wonderful stories, and we look forward to going to more of those, and hopefully this will unite our community even more. So thank you.
Three C is proclamation 2023-007, recognizing Vicki Lynn.
Whereas, Vicki Lynn was born in Rockford, Illinois, but spent most of her years living in Beloit, Wisconsin. And whereas, Ms. Lynn passed away on February 3rd, 2023, at the age of 47. And whereas, Ms. Lynn is remembered as a loving mother of four and grandmother of eight, soon to be nine. And whereas, Ms. Lynn's interests and hobbies included writing poetry, painting, and spending time with her grandchildren. And whereas, Ms. Lynn was an energetic soul who spread kindness, hope, and joyful enthusiasm to all who were blessed to meet her. And whereas, Ms. Lynn was a successful stand-up comedian and a champion for aspiring black women entrepreneurs. And whereas, Ms. Lynn was inspired to shine a light on the black women in the area who launched and sustained successful businesses. And whereas, Ms. Lynn created the annual Black Women in Business Expo in Beloit in 2019, which was her pride and joy, an annual expo that brought together black-owned businesses in the state line area to promote networking and the sharing of business lessons and the entrepreneurial spirit. And whereas, Ms. Lynn's imprint on her community cannot be overstated. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Beloit City Council and residents of Beloit extend sincere condolences to Vicki Lynn's family and friends on her passing. We congratulate her on her many achievements, most notably founding the annual Black Women in Beloit Expo, which shines a light on the wonderful entrepreneurs which make Beloit a better place to live, work, play, and do business. She will long be remembered and admired, presented this 20th day of February 2023.
And I know her son, Marshall Davis, wanted to be here this evening, but he was unable to make it. Vicki Lynn inspired many, especially black women in business. She left a legacy that will live on, but she will truly be missed in our Beloit community.
Thank you.
Three D is proclamation 2023-008, recognizing Tony Farrell, Sr.
Whereas, Tony Farrell, Sr.'s dedication to the betterment of the city of Beloit and Rock County is laudable. And whereas, since the 1960s, Tony has dedicated himself to promoting the Rock County Safety Series Network that includes the Suicide Prevention Program, which Tony developed to help prevent tragedies and save lives. And whereas, Tony was a volunteer with the City of Beloit Police Reserves for over six years, retiring as commander. And whereas, Tony volunteered as an official greeter for the Beloit City Council meetings, welcoming and assisting guests with a smile. And whereas, Tony volunteered for schools in Rock County and Merrill Community Center, providing safety series and school clinics to deter kids from unhealthy behaviors such as alcohol, drugs, et cetera, for 56 years. And whereas, in his 50th year of service, Tony has been the volunteer executive director of the Rock County Suicide Prevention and Safety Series, and he strongly encourages family members and friends to reach out to someone who has lost a loved one to suicide. In order for them to move forward with their healing process, they need our help and compassion. Tony concludes many of his presentations with, quote, "I would like to thank all the Rock County organizations who work so hard to help prevent these terrible tragedies. One tragedy is one too many." Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Beloit City Council does hereby recognize and thank Tony Farrell, Sr. for his over 50 years of voluntary volunteer service to the city of Beloit and Rock County, and extends best wishes to him in his future endeavors, presented this 20th day of February 2023.
Thank you. And if we could have, if we could have Tony to come forward and his wife, because it takes two, right? You gotta have that.
All right.
Beautiful wife, 54 years.
All right.
Tony, can you come to the microphone and just give us just a few words?
Yes, exactly.
You heard what you said about your beautiful wife of 54 years.
Yes. Oh, yes. Thank you for this proclamation. It is indeed an honor and a privilege to receive this, and I am very grateful. I'm also very proud of the city of Beloit, and thank you for all your help in preventing tragedies and saving lives. Thank you also for promoting the new suicide and crisis lifeline that began in July. The new number is 988, and Rock County Crisis Intervention is 608-757-5025. And if anyone should ever forget those two numbers, please dial 911. They will assist you. I'm so very grateful for all the volunteers that have helped over the years in the Suicide Prevention Program and the Safety Series in Beloit. I always found that they, the group was, the goodness, the kindness, the caring, and the wanting to help everyone, the compassion to reach out and make a difference in someone's life, and they did. The time when something would come up, they would be there, being with the person and saving their life and helping them on the road to recovery, and I am grateful to all of them and very proud of them also. For those that are suffering a crisis, or possibly maybe they had a tragedy in their family, my heart goes out to them. They need our help with their healing and their recovery, and with recovery, an act of kindness today may help them tomorrow. And with that hope comes that they know that someone out there cares for them. If anyone should ever be in a crisis, or they know someone that's in a crisis, please, please make that call for help. One tragedy is one too many. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and, wait just a minute. Before you do that, I just gotta say some words to you, Tony. We're gonna, just a minute. I just want to say, Tony, that we're gonna all stand again, but I'm just gonna, I just want to say some words to you. As you were talking, I just wrote some things down. I just want to say these to you, Tony, that you are such a very special person. You have worn so many different hats, not only in Beloit, but in our entire Rock County. You have truly impacted our community for the better. You are an example of what it means to be a servant leader. You have made a difference, and you have saved lives. So for that, we are eternally grateful for your service. If everybody could please stand. And Tony, we're not letting you off that easy, because there may be some councilors at the table that may want to also share some words to you, say some words to you. With Counselor Levy.
For Tony, uh, I, when I first got on council, I'm, where does this guy live? That's my, that was my question, because he greeted me at the Beloit City Council meetings at the door, passing out agendas, and then when I left and started working in Jamesville, he was at those school board meetings, passing out agendas. I'm like, who, where does he live? Then I got on Rock County, and there he was there, passing out it. I'm like, Tony, what do you do? Are you at, just go to meetings just for the heck of it? And he said he just believes in giving back, um, and that speaks volumes not only to Beloit, but to the whole Rock County. Uh, and so I think that's what we need to have more people do. Uh, it's one thing to say we love the county and we love Beloit, but we, sometime we have to put action behind our words, and Tony, you have definitely been a friend through the years. Um, I've never heard you say anything negative about anyone or the city or the county. Um, you're always saying, what can I do to help make it better? Um, and I, for one, appreciate calling you friend, um, and for everything you've done, I just wanted to say thanks.
All right. Any other councilors who'd like to say any words? I know Counselor Blakely is very emotional. Maybe we can take, can we take a quick photo? Tony, could you come up? Can we just take a quick photo real quick? Everybody, the councilors, can you come out just for a minute? Your minute is a service. I mean...
Item four is public hearings. Four A is consideration of ordinance number 3771, amending the future land use plan of the comprehensive plan for the property located at 1118 Garfield Avenue. First reading, Plan Commission recommendation for approval was five to zero.
Um, thank you. So the owner of the mobile convenience store located at 1407 Liberty Avenue is proposing to expand its existing store. Initially, the plan was to purchase 1112 Garfield Avenue, the property immediately north of the store, to construct a new 3,650 square foot store and increase from the current footprint of 2,700 square feet. Therefore, on September 20th, 2021, the city council approved an amendment to the future land use map of the comprehensive plan for 1112 Garfield from single-family residential urban to neighborhood commercial. And then on December 6th, 2021, the city council approved a zoning map amendment from R1B Single Family Residential District to C2 Neighborhood Commercial District for the same property. Since that approval, however, Samara Investments, Inc. has purchased 1118 Garfield, which is the lot immediately to the north of 1112 Garfield, and they now plan to construct a 6,000 square foot store over all three properties, 1407 Liberty, 1112 Garfield Avenue, and 1118 Garfield Avenue. Therefore, Angus Young Architects, on behalf of Samara, has submitted an application to amend the future land use map of the city of Beloit comprehensive plan for 1118 Garfield Avenue from single-family residential urban to neighborhood commercial. That is the first item four A. They have also applied for approval of a planned unit development master land use plan, which is item four B, and a zoning map amendment to PUD, which is four C. So the first step in the PUD process is the consideration of a PUD master land use plan, which is then followed by the zoning map amendment to PUD, and then finally approval of a final plan, which staff reviews. Um, when approving a redevelopment project such as this, um, the PUD district allows for more flexibility in site design and also allows city council greater ability to apply any necessary conditions. So the PUD master land use plan was included in your agenda packet and chose a larger 6,000 square foot convenience store with an improved parking layout. The gas pumps and canopy will not be altered. Um, the applicant is seeking reduced setbacks in the rear and reduced parking requirements on site. There was quite a bit of discussion at Plan Commission about, about the parking, um, and I think based on what you normally see at a convenience store, they felt like the 24 required stalls was kind of not appropriate for his, his site, um, so they reduced it to 12. Public notices were sent out to neighbors within 150 feet of the project site in early December, and the required public notices were published in the Beloit Daily News in December and January, and no comments were received from the neighbors. Um, the Plan Commission reviewed this, these items on January 4th and voted unanimously to recommend approval of all three items, the comprehensive plan amendment for 1118 Garfield, the PUD master land use plan, and the zoning map amendment. Um, the PUD master land use plan was recommended for approval, subject to eight conditions recommended by planning staff and one additional condition added by the commission, the commission. The conditions are as follows. This approval authorizes the construction of a 6,000 square foot gas station and convenience store shown on the PUD master land use plan. Any changes to the use of the property require city council approval. Principal vehicular access, location, and quantity of access points are to be determined during the PUD final plan review. Um, access could change due to the upcoming West Dot Intersection Improvement Project at Liberty Avenue, Madison Road, and McKinley Avenue. Um, and the rear pathway along the back of store will also be evaluated during that PUD final plan review. Um, you may recall that there was something on your agenda a while back about that, and DOT is not, does not have a draft design at this point. One, one-story building is permitted with the existing gas pumps and canopy. All new buildings on site must meet a minimum setback of 15 feet from all property lines. 12 off-street park, 12 off-street parking spaces must be provided on site. The business is allowed one primary on-premise sign of up to 150 square feet and no more than three secondary signs up to 30 square feet each in area, which is consistent with the standards in the C2 district. Um, for PUDs, the sign allowance is determined as part of the PUD. That's what's required by the sign ordinance. Um, prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall obtain site plan and architectural approval, which shall include a detailed review of all site grading, utility, landscape, and lighting plans. A landscape buffer will be required along property lines adjacent to residential land uses. This buffer shall include a six-foot privacy fence, which cannot be chain-linked with slats. A landscape strip shall be required along portions of the perimeter of the PUD located adjacent to public streets. The applicant shall submit a request to the assessor's office to administratively combine all three parcels prior to site plan approval, or submit a certified survey map for city approval, and then our standard condition about major changes coming back through this public process and minor changes being approved administratively. And we are excited, um, to see this major redevelopment on the west side. We don't often see stuff on the west side, um, so we're excited about this project coming to the city of Beloit. Um, so as I said, item four A is your comprehensive plan amendment, um, which is an ordinance, so it's on your agenda for layover tonight. Um, the second item four B is the resolution, which is on your agenda for action tonight. And then the third, the ordinance amending the zoning district map, is on your agenda for a public hearing and then layover, first reading.
Please come forward. The public hearing is now closed. Can I please have a motion to lay over the ordinance?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Levy. Is there a second?
I'll second. Take two.
Seconded by Counselor Trill. Are there any questions or discussion?
I just wanted to mention a couple things. This, uh...
This amendment is in conformance with our strategic plans, goal three, to create and sustain economic and residential growth, and goal four, to create and sustain a high quality of life. Also, this development complies with the economic sustainability by allowing this business to grow and thrive in the City of Beloit. And I appreciate the staff's report. There was approval from the Plan Commission on this item, which was unanimous, five and oh. And once this structure is constructed, this will increase the city's tax base. So that said, we have a motion in a second. Are there any other further questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
In your polls, say nay. The motion passes.
4B is consideration of Resolution 2023-002, approving a planned unit development master land use plan for the properties located at 1407 Liberty Avenue and 1112 Garfield Avenue and 1118 Garfield Avenue. Plan Commission recommendation for approval was five to zero.
And on this item 4B, Director Christensen already provided an overview of this item, so we will open the public hearing at this time. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed, please come forward. Final call. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed, please come forward at this time?
The public hearing is now closed. Can I please have a motion to approve the resolution?
I move to approve the resolution.
Moved by Counselor Blakely. Seconded by...
Vice President Forbeck, are there any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
In your polls, say nay. The motion passes.
Item 4C is consideration of ordinance number 3772, amending the zoning district map from R1B, single-family residential, and C-2, neighborhood commercial, to PUD, planned unit development, for the properties located at 1407 Liberty Avenue and 1112 and 1118 Garfield Avenue. First reading, Plan Commission recommendation for approval was five to zero.
Director Christensen already provided an overview on this item as well, so we will open the public hearing at this time. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed, please come forward. Final call. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed, please come forward. The public hearing is now closed. Can I please have a motion to lay over this ordinance?
I so move.
Moved by Vice President Forbeck. Seconded by Counselor Levy. Are there any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
In your polls, say nay. The motion passes.
Item five is public comments.
We have reached the point on our agenda for residents to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. Council members may not act on any requests at this meeting, but may refer a speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you please hold your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. Public comment is a courtesy, and we expect everyone to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Speakers are asked to complete a public comment form. Madam Clerk, were there any public comment forms submitted prior to our meeting?
We do. We have two. The first one is Brittany Keys, 1611 East Ridge Road.
Brittany, can you come forward and state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. My name's Brittany Keys, address 1611 East Ridge Road. So first, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to come before you and speak. And a big part of why I wanted to come today is first, welcome our new city manager, welcome Jerry, and acknowledge the hard work of the council, because I know that you put in a lot, a lot of hours with the process of finding and recruiting an excellent and strong candidate. The second thing that I wanted to come before you to do is thank you and share appreciation to both you and city staff for addressing a safety concern, specifically the crosswalk that was approved last meeting across White at LaSalle. That was addressing a concern I brought up in the fall, specifically to help with families walking between neighborhoods and for commuting to school. My family specifically walking with my daughter to Todd Elementary, we'd often have to cross very dangerous roads. And so I apologize that, without a crosswalk and without that, that safety consideration there. So I wanted to thank you and apologize I was not here to speak to that last meeting. So thank you for your support. And then the final thing I want to speak to is something you may have seen in the newspaper. It's an air quality monitoring project that I am taking, been a part of, and working to lead. And so it's an excellent collaboration between numerous community stakeholders. And so what we're looking at is air pollution, particularly particulate matter, PM 2.5, that has significant negative implications for health, specifically our young, those with asthma, and our elderly, for those who have respiratory conditions. And so we have air monitors at Merrill Community Center, Family Services, Beloit Memorial High School, which we've worked with the AP Environmental Science class on, putting up the monitor there, Turner High School, and then one around the Beloit College neighborhood. And I also want to just voice appreciation for city, the city staff supporting the project. And what we have found thus far, so our sensors have been live since September, what we have found thus far has been some higher pollution trends. Sometimes our trends with other monitors are amongst the highest in the state. Sometimes they are higher than the monitors that are live also in Chicago. So what we're looking at is to, we've also been in discussions with the DNR, and these sensors are in loan from the EPA. So it's a really awesome collaboration. We're going to be looking to compile the data, apply the conversion factor, and share the information with you once we have it, and really look forward to collaborating and problem solving and looking at how we can breathe, bring clean air for everyone to breathe for the betterment of the health of the community. So again, thank you for your support on the recent safety efforts, and I look forward to continuing to work with you and now Jerry moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Susan Adams, 703 Milwaukee Road.
Hi, I'm Susan Adams, 703 Milwaukee Road, and I am speaking for the League of Women Voters. First of all, we wanted to welcome you to our fair city, and we're glad you could start so soon and that you guys did all, like Brittany said, did all this great work. Second thing, I wanted to thank President Duncan, I think it was you, that ensured that we have another ARPA workshop besides tomorrow, because I can't come tomorrow, but anyway, I'll be able to come on the 28th, you said was B. So I want to thank you for that. Remind everyone to vote, and thank you, Marcy, for all your work. And it is a very important election. It's a Supreme Court justice election. And let's see, number four. I want you all to become, anybody who's watching, to become informed about the April 4th election, which in addition to the runoff for the Supreme Court justices, there are two referendums for school board, and there is a vote for the city council. Of course, there's nobody running, it's really, we're all running unopposed, but, and we have a school board candidate, who, there are three people running for two seats. And so the referendum, just wanted to alert you, was in the paper. There's one tonight, but that's not going to work. Wednesday, there is one on the 22nd in Colac at 5:30. There is another session at Merrill, I think at Merrill, I'm not sure if it's a community center, but anyway, it's the 23rd at 5:30. And Todd has, Elementary School has one at 4:30. That's on March 2nd. And there's several others, but they are all in the paper. And number five, which you just reminded me about the air quality monitoring, the League supports this. In fact, my husband and I have one on our house, and we are sometimes the highest in the city who live on Milwaukee Road, so it's kind of scary. So I'm very happy that we're going to be looking at this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any members of the public who did not sign up who wish to address the council this evening? Madam Clerk, were there any public comments submitted by email?
There was not.
Public comment is now closed.
Item six is consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Would any counselor like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I would like number six.
For the record, Vice President Forbeck is removing item 6E. Okay. Okay. Either, okay. Okay, so we have item 6E, 6F, and 6G. Okay, are there, would any counsel like anything else removed from the consent agenda? So may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including item 6A, 6B, 6C, 6D, 6H, and 6I? Is there a motion?
I so move.
Moved by Vice President Forbeck. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Levy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
In your polls, say nay. The motion passes. And we'll begin with the items that were pulled from the consent agenda. The first one was 6E.
6E is consideration of Resolution 2023-015, approving the state municipal agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for a state-led STP urban project to construct a multi-use path along East Ridge Road and Lee Lane.
At this time, our Public Works Director, Bill Frisbee, will present.
Good evening. This state municipal agreement is for a state-led project, so West Dot is taking the lead on this project. But this agreement will allow the city manager to sign the agreement for the construction of a multi-use path along East Ridge Road and Lee Lane. So it's going to connect from Cranston Road to the intersection of Milwaukee and Lee. Right where it's going to start on East Ridge will be where the bike lane ends currently on Cranston, kind of come up the dead end of East Ridge, follow Lee Lane up to the intersection where pedestrians and bicyclists will be able to cross Milwaukee Road to connect to the bike path system. This project is 80% state-funded for construction, 20% locally funded, and the design is 100% local cost. And then construction for this would be scheduled for 2024.
Thank you, Bill, for this information. May I please have a motion to approve the resolution?
I will so move.
Moved by Counselor Blakely. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Forbeck. Are there any questions or discussion? I just want to add that this connects the paths to make it safer for our residents. So if there is no other further discussion, at this time, we have a motion in a second to approve the res...
You have a question?
Oh. I'll back up. I'll go back to the discussion. Vice President Forbeck.
Thank you. I just want to point a clarification.
Just a moment, can you turn on the mic, please, Vice President Forbeck?
Absolutely. I just want a little clarification. When you say multi-use path, can you, I should know.
Yep, so it's, it's an off-road path that's available for pedestrians and bicyclists.
And bicy, okay, great.
And so it would be a standard 10-foot width section.
Yeah, all right. I think this is wonderful. I live right off of Cranston, so I'm thrilled that we're going to have this for our bikers and walkers.
I do want to note that this is a surface transportation fund, urban funding through the slats or MPO.
Yep.
At this time, there's a motion in a second to approve the resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In your polls, say nay. The motion passes.
Good job, Bill. I didn't get that in before.
6F is consideration of Resolution 2023-016, approving a state municipal agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for a state-led STP urban project to resurface Cranston Road between Prairie Avenue and Collinsworth Drive.
Our Public Works Director, Bill Frisbee, will present again to us.
Okay, another state municipal agreement, just like the last one. Again, STP urban funding through slats. This one will be for resurfacing of Cranston Road from Prairie Avenue all the way up to Collingswood. A portion of that from Chopir to Collingswood was restriped a couple of years ago, reducing from two lanes to a single lane with on-road bike lanes, and then the two-way, or the left-turn lanes in the center. As part of this project, we will be having a feasibility study done for the section between Prairie and Cranston for that same road section. Part of that study's done already. It found that the road will function properly with either section, the current one, or matching the section between Chopir and Collingswood. No decisions have been made yet to what we are going to do with the restriping of it. Part of this project will include pedestrian accommodations, bicyclist accommodations. Part of it's going to have to wait to a second phase. We've worked that out with the DOT, just due to timing that the funding has to be spent by, so we don't lose it before the next slats funding cycle. Again, this one's 80% state for construction, 20% locally, and 100% local. This project's a little bit more expensive with the total cost at 1.7 million. And again, this would be 2024 construction.
Thank you, Bill. May I please have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Terrell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Forbeck. Are there any questions or discussion? I just want to add that this will help to prevent accidents and repair our deteriorating pavements. So that said, any other further discussion? We have a motion in a second to approve the resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
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 In your polls, say nay. The motion passes. Next, item 6G.
Consideration of Resolution 2023-017, authorizing final payment of Public Works contract, C20-01, Henry Avenue resurfacing.
And Bill Frisbee will present.
Okay, so we had a construction project on Henry Avenue from Riverside to Royce. I believe the construction took place in 2021, finishing up in 2022. And this is just formalizing the, the final payment to the contractor. The project is done. Everything met specifications, so we still owe the contractor $15,177.52.
Thank you. And then I noticed on our impact, I'll wait till we take an action on that. First, may I please have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Terrell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Blakely, I think. And any questions or discussion? Counselor Day.
Sorry, that was my mistake. I didn't, I need to look a little closer. I didn't really mean for you to read that one, but thank you for, thank you for that, though.
We went on the fly and got the computer out.
It shows you that we have great staff, and that's what I thought. I'm like, okay, that was the easy one. But those funds are available in the 2021 CIP budget for this project. So thank you for sharing that with us tonight. At this time, there's a motion in a second to approve this resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In your polls, say nay. The motion passes.
Item seven is licenses. 7A is consideration and application for a new Class B fermented malt beverage beer license. Tavalli Enterprises Incorporated doing business as Classic Cinemas Beloit, located at 2799 Cranston Road. Eric Noonam, agent.
At this time, our City Clerk Treasurer, Marcy Granger, will present.
Tavalli Enterprises Incorporated requesting the approval of a Class B fermented malt beverage beer license for the period ended June 30th, 2023. A complete application with publication fees was submitted to the Clerk Treasurer's office and was referred to the ABLCC for their February 14th, 2023 agenda, and back to City Council for you tonight. The ABLCC reviewed the application at their February 14th, 2023 regular meeting to ensure conformity with existing rules, regulations, and zoning ordinances of the City of State, and made a recommendation to council based on their review for approval four to zero. The City Council will take action on the recommendation of the ABLCC tonight.
Thank you very much. May I please have a motion to approve the resolution?
I so move.
Moved by Counselor Blakely. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Anderson. Are there any questions or discussion? Counselor Terrell? Terrell.
Quickly, Beth, if you wouldn't mind, we had a quick discussion, I would say a quick discussion about concerns with others coming forward with liquor licenses in the future for their businesses that are similar, like gas stations and whatnot. And I just kind of wanted to, if you wouldn't mind, what we talked about as far as the ordinance is going forward and how we will work on that, if you can explain that to the public so that we know going forward. So we don't have any confusion after-
Sure. Perhaps I could do it under a seven B, which addresses the gas station type of license, the Class A.
Oh, okay.
This is a Class B beer for the movie theater.
Oh, this is for the movie... Sorry.
Yep, I'd be happy to address that under seven B.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I got it mixed up.
That's okay. You're just moving us ahead quickly.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other questions or discussion?
Madam President.
Counselor Anderson?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to thank all the staff and the commission members for the lengthy process that it took place. And Eric, I know, I was in your theater on Friday, and you have a great staff there, and I have full faith that they're going to, you know, take this privilege very seriously and do everything they can. And I know you'll keep a watchful eye on them. You were very busy. You were essentially slinging popcorn yourself, so great job. And hopefully your staff will continue to have success. Thank you.
And I'm certainly sure we all echo that. We really appreciate the doing and the business that you've brought to Beloit. So much appreciated.
Right.
At this time, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All those-
No, I was going to give a quick comment to clean that up. No, I was going to say, this was a lengthy process. I'm glad we worked together on making this happen for the movie theater. And like I said, I said this before, I'm all about, you know, including my colleagues up here on the City Council. We're all for business coming here in the city of Beloit and, you know, doing what they can for the average working-class person here in the city. And I've always said, even going to the movie theater myself, that it's very affordable, especially given some of your competitors in the surrounding areas and the fact that before I had to go, you know, to Schaumburg and places outside of Beloit because, you know, before you guys renovated the new movie theater, it just wasn't as entertaining. But now it's very affordable, really good prices. Climate chair is really nice in there, and I'm just glad that we can make this happen for you guys. And going forward, I wish you the best, and you will see me in there to come see Creed III. I'm looking forward to that movie. But I'll just say that there. Good luck, Eric.
And I just want to add, it's nice to have a cinema for our entire community. So thank you.
May I make a quick comment?
Go ahead, Counselor.
It's going to be quick. I promise it'll be quick. Thank you to Eric and your colleagues. As Counselor Terrell was just saying, you were patient enough to work with us. We got it figured out, and I think that's great. I haven't had time for a movie lately, but I will sometimes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Any other further questions or discussion from the councilors? At this time, there's a motion and a second to approve this resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. One nay, motion passes.
Item seven B is consider an application for a new Class A intoxicating liquor license for Casey Marketing Company doing business as Casey's General Store, number 3316, located at 2350 Cranston Road, Beloit. Anthony Hawkes, agent.
At this time, our City Clerk Treasurer, Marcy Granger, will present.
And I'll make a statement after Clerk Granger presents her report then. Okay. Casey's Marketing Company doing business as Casey's General Store, 3316, is requesting the approval of a Class A intoxicating liquor license for the period under June 30th, 2023. A complete application with publication fees was submitted to the Clerk Treasurer's office and was referred to the ABLCC for their February 14th, 2023 agenda and back to City Council tonight. The ABLCC reviewed the application at their February 14th regular meeting to assure conformity with existing rules, regulations, and zoning ordinances of the city and state and made a recommendation to council for approval four to zero. The City Council will take action on the recommendation of the ABLCC tonight.
Krieger, it's okay. Yeah. Sure. I know there's some concerns about the license tonight and just the process in general. And the neighborhood impact statement is generally required for a new licensee or for any of the cases that have petitions to exceed the geographic restrictions. So there was not one done in this instance for the neighborhood impact statement for Casey's. If council wants to have a neighborhood impact statement completed, you could make a motion to refer this back to the ABLCC to conduct that survey, and then it'll come back to you then for final action. I know the process of a neighborhood impact statement is not codified right now, so it was... It may appear to be kind of hodgepodge, but what I'm proposing that we do is create a system, draft an ordinance that provides very specific guidelines when the neighborhood impact statement is required and when it is not. So we will bring that draft ordinance to the council for its consideration at a future meeting. And I know President Duncan also wanted to indicate that regarding the alcohol licenses in general, we've had a lot of discussions about alcohol in the city of Beloit. And so once we get past the ARPA funding in May, after the new counselor is seated, we'll have some workshops about alcohol and make sure that we're all on the same page and continue to be on the same page with regard to those issues. So I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has some.
Okay, what we'll do is get a motion on the floor, and then we'll take questions and discussion, if that's okay? Okay, so what should that motion read for clarification? Just a moment. Counselor Anderson?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to refer it back to the ABLCC for a neighborhood impact statement.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion by Counselor Anderson. Are there any questions or discussion? Okay, let's do Counselor Day, because his light was on first, and then we'll go to Counselor Levy.
All right. I'm just, just to clarify, so we're doing this because we don't feel that we have a process that's been consistently done?
The neighborhood impact statement has been generally required when there's been a new Class A license. And because Casey's already has a Class A beer license, it wasn't thought that that was a new license. That's why we did not do a neighborhood impact statement. So if it's the desire to also, when you have a new, the Class A hard liquor license, when that's something new, we can also require that neighborhood impact statement. So that's, I think, the reason where there's a motion to send it back to the ABLCC is because there's a new intoxicating liquor license that's being requested, that we want to make sure that that neighborhood impact statement happens for each of those applications.
Okay, thank you for-
Happy to. Yep.
For that.
Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I agree with sending it back. As I stated before, I want to make sure that we are being consistent as much as possible that we can and not these one-offs. And I think if we just have an ordinance that says, here's when we're going to do it, then I think it's more consistent. And then when it hits our tables, we don't have to wonder, okay, do we need to send it back? It can continue to go through the process. So I think I like that, sending it back and then giving staff time to put together some kind of ordinance. And I think I would like to see in that ordinance that if it is changing, like in this case, that even if they didn't have the impact study before, that we move forward, because now we're talking about an additional type of alcohol. So the neighborhood may say something different. So I think even if we're changing it from the B to the A, that we still include the impact study in that.
Yeah, we'll be sure to include as broad an ordinance as possible. And then if you wanted to discuss it and make some amendments from there, we can certainly have those discussions.
And not putting any pressure on anybody. That's not... But do we have an estimated timeframe of when that-
I could have it to you for your second meeting in March.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other further? Counselor Blakely?
Yes, thank you very much. I do not think it's necessary to refer it back. I believe that it's ready to go forth. I'm also looking forward, however, as Attorney Krieger was saying, to working out an ordinance that we will have from here on out, there on out, I should say. But I do believe we should move forward on this this evening. Thank you.
Any other further question?
You have a motion and a second to refer it back to the ABLCC.
Okay. Yeah, so...
Right, so you have... So just so everyone's clear, there's a motion on the floor to refer this matter back to the ABLCC so that staff can make sure a neighborhood impact statement has been prepared. So you'd be looking for a vote on that item, Madam President.
And we're talking about that for consistency, is what I'm hearing, that we want to make sure that we're consistent as we move forward, which is why we're going to do it back to the ABLCC.
Right, so you'd be calling for a vote at this time.
Okay, so should I do...
We would do all those in favor.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
One nay, the motion passes.
Item eight is ordinances. There are none. Item nine is appointments. The individuals named below have been nominated for a seat on a city count... or excuse me, city board, committee, or commission. Each nomination is subject to confirmation by the City Council. Approval of appointment will be accomplished by one motion unless a council member requests to take up a nomination separately, in which event the nomination will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
May I please have a motion to approve the appointments as presented?
So move.
Moved by Counselor Terrell.
Second.
Second by Vice President Forbeck. Are there any questions or discussion? At this time, we have a motion and a second to approve the appointments. Make sure my mic's on. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Item ten is counselor activities and upcoming events.
I think we're going to start with Counselor Blakely.
Thank you, Madam President. I attended the fifth annual Black Women in Business Expo at the Eclipse Center on February 11th. They were... It was a wonderful event, lots of vendors from throughout the area. And of course, as was mentioned so elegantly and eloquently earlier, the founder of the expo, Vicky Lynn, passed away only a few days before the expo. I got to meet her eldest son, Marshall Davis, just outside of the event, and it was very much an honor. I was happy to be a part of it. I also attended an online event, a Forward Together Seminar hosted by the League of Women Voters. Advancing Democracy was the theme, and the keynote speaker was Rock County Judge Ashley Morse. She spoke even more specifically on when race and trauma collide, the need for trauma-informed care. It was very nicely done. I learned a lot, cried some more tears. It was very good. Finally, at last week's municipal library board meeting, our new superintendent of Beloit Schools, Dr. Willie Garrison, spoke. He's very articulate. He's well-studied. He does his homework, and he's well-spoken. The man who began his teaching career in Milwaukee, first taught social studies. He spoke about the referendum that will... The referendums that will come up, not in tomorrow's primary, but at the April election. But I was very pleased to meet him. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Blakely. Vice President Forbeck?
No report.
Counselor Levy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to start by thanking, again, welcoming Jerry, first of all, here. We have a couple of things in common. He's a big Whitney Houston fan, and so am I. I don't know, every once in a while, he goes back from Whitney Houston to Taylor Swift, so we're going to talk about that and see. But welcome. We look forward to you getting acclimated to the community, acclimated to the staff, and we're just glad to have you here. And since we're talking about staff, I would like to also thank the entire staff for all that you have done while we were looking for the city manager. You stepped up, and we say it so often that you step up, you get the job done, and you just make it look so effortless. And I know managing your day-to-day tasks and then the questions that we have, but you never complained. It's like we always just get it done and whatever you guys want. So to the entire city of Beloit staff, we appreciate all that you do. Please take it back tomorrow to your departments and let them know that we greatly appreciate it. Then I want to also thank the chief. He did an outstanding job on Saturday in speaking at New Zion Baptist Church. He had some data information there that I think the public was well shocked to hear, but pleased to hear as well. I'm going to encourage you to get that out there to the community a lot more in the paper, because people were... You could hear it in the audience, like, oh, wow, really didn't know that. So it was good information. I think it's information that we need to share throughout the Beloit community. And then again, and she'll just get me when it's over, but it's Beth's last meeting. He has a city manager slash city attorney, so she'll be back over here. But can't say enough of all the things that you did while we were searching. I know it had to be rough, you know, handling that seat, doing all the stuff that you were doing, handling us with phone calls. But you still did it effortlessly. You made it look easy. No matter what we piled on you, you never said no. You just go, okay, we'll get it done. We'll get it done. So greatly appreciate the job that you were doing. So, yeah. And you got to be careful, because President Duncan presented Beth with flowers once, and we just thought she was just going to, like, fall out, because she was like so... She's so... She doesn't want the credit. She just... She's a behind-the-scenes person. But I'm just a firm believer that when people do a good job, you let them know how great of a job they did. So we want to thank you for all that you did as well.
And then he said about the chief being in the paper. He is in the paper tonight.
Well, no, New Zion. No, he spoke at New Zion Saturday. That's what I was speaking about. He spoke at New Zion on Saturday, so, yeah.
Right, and he is in the papers.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, but I think we need to also get that on our social media. Like you said, get that message out.
Nah, nah, he's all right, you know? We'll see some.
So thank you, Chief Seale.
So we're going to be doing our inaugural annual information to the city and to our community members in regards to our crime stats, our hiring processes, and so forth. So we're going to put that all out March 8th and March 9th. We'll have a meeting on the west side of the city and a meeting on the east side of the city. We'll have all our administrative staff there, so people can understand who we are and everybody can introduce each other. So we're going to be getting that out in March.
Great, thank you. And I didn't do an introduction, because I think almost every member knows who you are. So thank you, Chief Seale. Okay, Counselor Terrell?
All right. Want to start off welcoming our good buddy Jerry into the city. I wanted to let you know that finding you and actually getting you here was actually a challenging process, but for my first time being involved in something like that, it was, you know, challenging and fun. We had a lot of, you know, like, you know, we just did a lot behind the scenes to get you here, as well as some of the other candidates that came forward, but you came out on top, and I'm happy that you're here working with us, and I think you are the perfect guy for the job, and it's definitely going to lead us forward with everything that the city, that we're planning on doing as a unit. And it's just good to have you here. And I also wanted to say thank you as well to Beth. Beth, you have, as I said before, been a champion for us. You have worked very hard and been very transparent with everybody. And you swung a lot of people in your corner that had doubts in the past, and I'm just glad it worked out that way. I couldn't... You know, we couldn't ask for a better person to come forward and do it for us, and you did it. So as well as the staff, the city of Beloit staff, you guys obviously backed us up very well with everything, and we kept the city going. Like, you know, we did it in a way where it was non-controversial. Nobody came down and yelled at us or said anything about it. Well, you know, what the city is doing, and we don't have any leadership. We kept it going like nothing happened. And I'm just glad we, you know, that the process is over, but I just wanted to say we did a really good job with bringing Jerry in and just everything that happened in the process. And I also wanted to let you... Let the public know, we're having a Parks and Recreation Workshop at Merrill Elementary. This will be on February 27th at 6:30 PM. We're just... We're inviting the public to attend. It'll be similar to when I worked with staff to organize a housing event, and I'm expecting a pretty good turnout. We're going to jump on Facebook and whatnot, social media, get the word out, and I'm expecting a pretty good turnout. And what this is going to be about is for people to come in and pretty much learn about what we're... Give input, insight on what the park improvement projects that we're doing here in the city of Beloit, and also inform people about the $300,000 that the city council that we set aside for youth programming. And this will be for nonprofit organizations to come and apply for. So basically, those people that's out there putting in grassroots work, putting in the hard work, we're encouraging them to come apply for these funds, because- hard work, we're encouraging them to come apply for these funds because we need a lot more progress, a lot of people out here doing things, and we want people to bring in not culturally relevant, not only culturally, culturally relevant opportunities for kids as well as like just anybody in general that's doing anything for the youth, we're, we're encouraging people to come forward and, you know, apply for those funds on behalf of our youth because it's all about our youth, and we, I'm, I'm just happy about this money that we were able, able to put out towards that. And last but not least, I wanted to say to the city council, to us, all seven of us sitting up here, just this council right here, all seven of us working together, we've been able to knock out a lot of common sense issues, we haven't had any political infighting, rather, you know, you see on the news all the time, Democrats, Republicans, independents, they're fighting, they're going back and forth, they're arguing, and I wanna say just with this council right here in the year 2023, before the next election, we have worked so hard together, and nobody has been left out, nobody was left behind, we've all, everybody's opinions was valued on this council, just as this unit right now and going forward, like, I just wanted to say Clinton Anderson, Kevin Levy, Sherri Blakely, Vice President Nancy Forback, and President Regina Duncan, I'm so honored to be working with, with this group right here. And Kevin Day, Jesus, I'm sorry, Kevin, see, I said, I didn't wanna say Kevin twice. See, I meant, I'm sorry, Kevin, Kevin Day. You know I love you too, K2, I'm sorry. I just wrote, my bad. But no, just all of us, all seven of us, as I mentioned, all seven of us, we have definitely worked together and, and made some things happen, and as I say, like, given the things that you see out on the news with just like local, state, and federal governments and whatnot, looking at this council right here, if people look at the things that we've been able to do, I believe going forward, this is the, the model that we have set for like any form of government to be able to work together and get things done, common sense, regardless of your politics, because I'm tired of seeing this, it's just too much fighting going on, and I just wanted to say on behalf of this council right here, including my man Kevin Day right here, we, it's just been an honor, and, and five years down the line, I'm gonna remember this exact council because come April 4th, we are gonna have at least one person coming out a year from now, if I'm up on the ballot again or not, we might have somebody else come in, but just with us seven right here, including Kevin Day, I, I just want to say I'm honored to work with this council, and, and, and just thank you, we, we've done a lot, and we've been very transparent to the public, so I just want you all to know I love all of you, and I'll just leave it there.
Thank you, Marquis, that was beautiful.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna say well said.
Thank you, I only got a few meetings left, so I'm gonna talk for 20 minutes. No, I'm just kidding. First off, yeah, Beth, thank you for all the time you spent as interim city manager and city attorney, that must have been a nightmare, so I'm, I'm glad it's almost over. And Jerry, welcome, you know, obviously we all selected you, so we're very excited for you to be here, the community's echoed that sentiment, and I think you're gonna be a great addition to the city staff, so welcome and go to, go to some Sky Carp Games, go, go enjoy some stuff, and Beth will talk to you about the ethics of getting free movie tickets, just, just so we, just, just 'cause we don't want you to get in trouble yet, yes. That, that being said, I wanted to share that from February 24th to March 5th is BIF. I, I think it is one of those unique events that I think people take for granted in this community, it's been 18 years of having it, and I think, you know, I think Vice President Forback would share the sentiment, I think when somebody said an International Film Festival in Beloit, they probably laughed and said that's not gonna happen, and here we are with, you know, international filmmakers coming to Beloit, and that's, that's such an amazing accomplishment, so we've got, you know, a great team there putting that on, and hopefully we'll have another 18 years and much more than that. I wanted to also share, went to the Beloit Coalition Church's Black History Month event, and Counselor Levy was there speaking, and Chief Sales was there too, and, you know, we have, we have a lot of great leaders in our community, and it was great to see both of you there, and yeah, Chief, you've got some great statistics there, and I know, I know you're dealing with a lot right now, but you know, keep doing all the stuff you're doing, you've got a great department. And I also just wanted to remind everybody to go vote tomorrow. You only have one thing on the ballot, if you're in Beloit, Supreme Court, there's four candidates, you can only pick one. If you live on the west side of Beloit, you vote at the Beloit Historical Society, and if you live on the east side of Beloit, you vote at Central Christian Church. Polling hours are from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If you wanna take a look at the names of the candidates, you can go to myvote.wi.gov. And that's my report, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Counselor Day.
I just gotta say I love you too, Marquis. Now, I'm gonna repeat what he said, it was a fun, I really enjoyed the experience working with everybody up here, hiring Jerry, and welcome Jerry, we look forward to you leading us to a better future, brighter future, a better day.
Oh, I like that.
It's good? Come on. It was good, it's good.
Starting early.
So, and then to echo what, yeah, right, echo what Clinton said, it's an important race, get out and vote tomorrow. So, two out of four candidates, they're gonna advance, right? And it's for a nonpartisan election, so make sure you're out there and you vote for us. And I wanna say thank you to the DPW bill, thanks to your department and all your guys for the streets keeping everything moving around here, so that's my report, thank you.
Thank you. I thought you were giving me some of your time, that's what it is, Counselor Day. First, I just wanna say to Beth and to all of our staff, the department heads, who have helped to help us have a smooth transition and to progress, I just wanna say to each of you, thank you. And then next, I just wanna say earlier in our meeting, our new city manager, Jerry Gabriel Atos, was officially sworn in. Congratulations, Jerry, again, and welcome to our city of Beloit team. That said, we would like members of the public to please join us in a community reception for Jerry on Tuesday, February 28th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the Rotary River Center, which is located at 1160 South Riverside Drive. I encourage everyone to please stop in and meet our new city manager, you don't want to miss this opportunity. Now for my counselor activities, I attended the ARPA follow-up workshop and the first ARPA Public Information Session. Megan McBride, our grants administrator and city staff did an outstanding job putting together the information and sessions for those who are interested in submitting an application for ARPA funds. Staff has also added an additional in-person session for February 28th, 2023, from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Beloit Public Library. Information on all of the public information sessions can be found at our website, www.bloitwi.gov/arp. Thanks to our staff for doing a job well done. I was also present at the Greater Beloit Economic Development Corporation Executive Committee Meeting, the Beloit International Film Festival Reveal Party, along with some of my colleagues who are here tonight, the Black, Her Story Black Women in Business Expo, and I did a meet and greet with the whole Chunk Nation along with Celestino Ruffini, the CEO of Visit Beloit, and Drew Pennington, our Economic Development Director. Counselor Clinton Anderson will have an in-district swearing and ceremony for his role as state representative on this Saturday, February 25th at noon at the Beloit Public Library, so you don't wanna miss that. Also, there are vacancies on our city commission and boards. If you wanna put your talent to good use, please call 608-364-6614 for more information. Next, I wanna give a heartfelt thanks to Pastor Norris Jackson Jr., the Beloit Coalition of Churches, and all who helped organize the Black History Event, dismantling the Cradle to Prison Pipeline. I applaud their efforts to shed light on this critical issue and recognize some of the groundbreakers and trailblazers in our community who are paving the way. Having positive representation, it truly matters. It's important that we continue to empower our youth and others to reach their dreams, not only during Black History Month, but throughout the entire year. And congratulations to all the honorees, including our very own Counselor Kevin Levy and Police Chief Andre Sales. It was very humbling for me to be part of this group of servant leaders, and great to see that State Senator Mark Spritezer and State Representative Clinton Anderson joined in the celebration too. By working together, we can continue to make a difference in our community. Sadly, I was unable to make that event because of a family emergency. My daughter had a car accident. It has been an extremely difficult time for my family and I. From the bottom of my heart, thank you to everyone for your caring, concerns, and prayers. I had Counselor Levy come up to me and offer, he just said, you know, you got a prayer chain going, don't you? And then my pastor today from Wesley Church called and just did a prayer over the phone, so it has meant the world to me. We can't take life for granted because we have to make sure that every, every moment that we understand how precious that is. So, this ends my counselor report for this evening. Next, item 11.
City Manager Presentation, 11A is Presentation of the Landmarks Commission Annual Report of 2022 Historic Preservation Activities.
At this time, our Landmarks Commission Chairperson, Celestino Ruffini, is here to present. Thank you, Celestino.
You're welcome. All right, good evening, President Duncan, counselors, city manager, and city staff. I'm Celestino Ruffini, resident 2366 High South Court, and your current chair of the Landmarks Commission. Thank you for taking time tonight to review our annual reports. I'm extremely honored to be the first activity under a city manager presentation, so not to take any, yeah, any light away from our new city manager, but I, I guess I'll, I'll give a report and presentation for you tonight, take you off the hook tonight, so on the screen, we will have the report, and I've got control of it, so that will work. All right, so the annual report that the commission provides is within, written within ordinance, 32.05 parentheses 10, the Historic Preservation Ordinance, and we report our activities to the council and to the public each year. In 2022, the commission did meet a total of nine times, and we do meet, attempt to meet at least monthly based on business we have in front of us, and will meet additionally if cases come before us. The commission currently consists of nine members, you see seven of them listed under commissioners. I do wanna thank Counselor Blakely for being our representative to the commission, she's our eighth member, and as President Duncan mentioned, we're always looking for active volunteers to serve on any of the commissions across the city, and we do currently have one vacancy on Landmarks Commission. I do want to mention that a great debt of gratitude goes to city staff, in particular Hillary Rotman, for her leadership in making not only the applicants' lives easier, but for us commissioners, our lives well-improved, for being engaged and educated on the topics in front of us, and so a big thank you to Hillary for her work. The commission typically meets on the third Tuesday of each month, so we actually do have a meeting here in chambers tomorrow at 7:00. If the general public is maybe interested in the commission but not sure how involved they want to be, we did reinstate in 2022 the Site Visit Subcommittee, which is made up of commissioners and public, and that's a subcommittee that meets as needed to review and go to major projects in the community, to be boots on the ground to understand what the project entails before it comes forward to a commission meeting. So, we encourage people to not only join the Landmarks Commission, but also our Site Visit Subcommittee. Another big piece of the commission in 2022, and I don't know if our city had been members before, but we asked city staff to become, for the city of Beloit and the Landmarks Commission, to become members of the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions, which has really enhanced the educational opportunities and trainings that we as commissioners can take a part in to increase the professionalism we're delivering back to the residents of this community. Our primary scope of work is issuing COAs, and these are spelled out within the Historic Preservation Ordinance, and predominantly this looks at altering the scope or design of any historic structure within the community. We deal with topics like roofing, gutters, sidewalk, driveways, chimneys, fences, and windows, lots of exciting stuff, especially if you're a homeowner or a property owner, but very important to the aesthetic of our historic districts and neighborhoods in Beloit, of which we have four historic districts currently in the city. Our College Park District is the largest district with 156 properties, and that's located near Beloit College. Bluff Street is our one of two districts on the west side of Beloit with 115 properties, and our smallest district is Merrill Street, District Four, properties all side by side at the very east end of Merrill Street before you get to the river. In addition, we do have the Milwaukee Road and Emerson Street Residential District, which is not locally designated, but is eligible for tax credits to improve their properties, and that's an additional 150 properties. On top of the residential properties there, we have 46 individually listed landmarks. For example, the building my business, Visit Beloit, owns is one of those 46, and, and so I personally bring not only past experience to the Landmarks Commission, but I've been an applicant myself to this commission, and so very excited when we have one of those 46 come forward. So, we have a total of 471 current landmarks here in the city. So, in 2022, we did have 30 certificates that were approved, 30 COAs that were approved, 10 of which were done by staff. This is a breakdown of the different requests that were made. In perspective, we did have slightly fewer COAs approved in 2022 than we did in 2021, but all the projects that did come for to us were all of great impact, and all the property owners were very excited in order, are very excited to move forward with the projects they were applying for. We deal sometimes with some very mundane stuff, we deal with some very exciting stuff, and in the presentation, Hillary included really the most notable project with a large federal grant, Beloit College is doing renovations to the Morse Library and building out on the lower level, the Impact Beloit Hub. And so, the COA for this project was really probably the largest and most notable project of the year, and a project that they are well underway with at the college. That being said, like I said, we meet third Thursday of each month, whether you're a counselor or a member of the public, we encourage you to review our agendas and meeting packets, we encourage the public to come learn and listen about our historic districts, and we look forward to continuing education of our residents in this community about what wonderful assets our historic districts provide to us as residents of this city. With that, any questions or comments I can make?
Any comments or questions?
It's important work, and I'm happy to be a part of it as a council rep. Thanks, Celestino.
Welcome.
Thank you, Celestino, for presenting to our community.
Item 12.
Item 12 is reports from boards and city officers. 12A is Consideration of Resolution 2023-024, approving participation, excuse me, participation in the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources and United States Environmental Protection Agency-led Service Line Replacement Accelerator Program.
Our Public Works Director, Bill Frisbee, will present at this time.
All right, this one's an exciting one. I forgot the, the printout of this one on the printer, so I have my computer again. On February 2nd, we had a meeting with a couple staff members from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. They had reached out to us informing us of a new program that the US EPA had launched called the Lead Service Line Replacement Accelerator. This program is providing technical assistance to communities to help them achieve 100% lead service line replacement. Funding for this program comes through the bipartisan infrastructure law. There's $15 billion that were set aside for There's $15 billion that were set aside for lead service line replacement through the Safe Drinking Water Loan Programs. And a significant amount of the funding is going to be given to disadvantaged communities through grants and principal forgiveness loans. The state of Wisconsin does not give grants through the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program. They do everything as principal forgiveness. There's something in state statutes that they can't give grants. So, they said, "We were contacted by them, letting us know about the program." And they said, "Would you like to participate?" We said, "Definitely. Give us some more information. We're going to take it to council and get a sign-off on this." But so, what this program is going to do for us, EPA will hire consultants directly, and they'll, they'll work with us on developing a comprehensive lead service line inventory. Right now, we have a pretty good inventory. We know what the materials are and sizes are of the utility portion of the services, but we don't have a great idea of what the customer portion of the service is made out of. We have started some work on that this past year, but we have a long ways to go. In addition to the inventory, the consultant will help us plan and prioritize lead service line replacement projects, help us engage community stakeholders, providing information, and they'll help us apply for state revolving fund loans, making sure our applications are best as they can be to help us score better, so we'll be eligible for those principal forgiveness loans. All of this will be at no cost to the City of Beloit. This program, when EPA launched it, there's only four states who are participating at this point, with Wisconsin being one of them. And there are eight communities in Wisconsin that were selected to participate. Those are Milwaukee, Beloit, Wausau, Ashland, Markison, Frederick, Wisconsin Rapids, and And then, for developing the lead service line inventory, there's going to be a couple of pieces to that. One is historical record review. So, they'll look through our old lateral service line cards that we have from original installations, look through construction plans that we have on file. What we can't find in record review, there'll be some service line investigations where they'll go to residents' homes, take a look at the line, and see what it is coming in. We've been collecting that data for the last couple of years as we've been doing water meter changeouts. So, we have about 4,000 of those identified from having our staff's eyes on them. And when we aren't going into the homes, they can also do what's called potholing. So, we'll take a hydro excavator, so tube about that big around, has a lot of suction, high-pressure hose. You basically spray the ground with it and suck the ground up, so it's a very efficient way of excavating a small hole, right down to the service line, see what the material is outside. Then they'll help us with, how are we going to manage all this data, what's going to be the best format for keeping it, and then communicating with the homeowners. And then, we're going to develop plans on what's going to be the best method to replace the service lines. We know currently, we have just under 3,000 lead service lines left on the utility side. And because we don't have a great inventory on the customer side, we don't know, but we think it's somewhere around the same. And then, I guess, as I said before, they're going to help us develop those applications in the future. We have submitted several Safe Drinking Water Loan, what's called an intent to apply. So, you submit that to the state ahead of time, saying, "Hey, we've got these projects that we're thinking about applying for funding on." And then they score those, and then you have the application period. So, we've submitted a couple of those intent to apply and ranking forms for lead service line replacement, both on the utility side and the private side. I was notified just last week, EPA has selected their consultant. I don't recall exactly the name offhand, but it was a firm out in the Northeast, out closer to where EPA headquarters are, but they'll be working with the communities nationwide. And so, if we approve this tonight, which I anticipate will happen, tomorrow, we'll be contacting DNR, letting them know who from city staff will be their point of contact, and then we'll get started right away. And we were told that the consultant should be able to be on board with us, starting within a couple of weeks of notification. So, with that...
Thank you very much. May I please have a motion to approve the resolution?
Somo.
Moved by Counselor Terrell. Is there a second? Second by Vice President Forbeck. Are there any questions or discussion?
Good work, Bill. Good work. And this will be so helpful for the environmental safety of our community. Congratulations.
Thank you. Vice President Forbeck, I saw you.
Well, will this also then help? I mean, I know we have to get our, get rid of our lead that we are, lines that we are responsible for, before, of course, the individuals can do that. Can you just remind me, Bill? How will the, the people know that they need to do this? And I'm assuming there's going to be help to pay for this? Because it must be quite expensive to replace your line going out to the city?
Correct. So, to start with, with this first piece, we'll have a communication plan where we get out to the public, when we're going to be in people's areas, how we're going to schedule getting in to verify service line materials. So, anybody in the public, don't just let somebody come knocking on your door, say, "Hey, I need to check your service line material," and let them in. We'll have good communication programs, and we'll roll out to everybody how you know that that somebody is representing the City of Beloit coming to your door. So, make sure we've got a good program with that. And then, once everything's identified and service lines are being replaced, we're going to apply for as much funding as possible to assist homeowners. We're going to, once the inventory's done, we'll have a public-facing website. It will show service line material on the utility side and the private side, so any property owner will be able to go out to that, look, see what the service line material is. If it's lead or considered to be lead, which would be a galvanized pipe that's downstream of where there is or was lead, that'll be considered a lead service and need to be replaced also. But that website will be one way. We'll have communication plans that are developed with all of this. Right now, a lead service line replacement, or any service line replacement on the homeowner's side's running $5,000 to $6,000. And so, we're going to apply for as much funding as possible to offset that cost.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I know when you mentioned this, this was really exciting. I know you have a pretty good poker face, Bill, because I know you're super excited. I know internally, you're jumping up and down right now for this, but yeah, this...
We were, we were pretty giddy after we had the meeting with DNR.
Giddy from Bill Frisbee is an odd, odd term, but I will take it. Yes, I will echo the giddiness, too. This is awesome. So, I'm, I'm very excited. I know you'll get to work and make sure that this gets taken care of, and, you know, we start getting rid of those lead service lines. It's really important. So, thank you for all the work you're doing.
And to echo that, I just want to say thank you to Bill and to the staff for your hard work and partnership in this effort. And I just want to mention, this also is in conformance with our strategic pla, plan. Goal one, to create and sustain safe and healthy neighborhoods. Goal two, to create and sustain a high-performing organization. Goal five, which is to create and sustain high-quality infrastructure and connectivity. And then goal six, to create and sustain enhanced communications and community engagement while maintaining a positive image. This program will accelerate the removal of lead from our drinking water system, which is in the best interest of the health and well-being of all of our residents. So, thank you for this effort. At this time, there is a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
In your polls, say nay. The motion passes. Thank you, Bill.
12B is Consideration of Resolution 2023-019, Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement Between the City of Beloit, Wisconsin and the City of Janesville, Wisconsin, for the conveyance of a fire department vehicle.
May I please have a motion to go? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping here. Go ahead. Okay. At this time, Deputy Chief Jason Griffin will present, and I'm sorry, I was going too fast.
That's right. It's a very exciting time for me. I'm part of the technical rescue that this squad has, and it has all the tools to do. And to be able to pass this on to another department that's going to be able to do it, and it's not just special to me, Janesville Fire Department, we have chief and, and the deputy chief here, because they're excited. They know how big this resource is. This all started after 9/11. After 9/11, there was a federal, lots of federal money going out there for building collapse types, type of rescue teams. And the City of Beloit was able to apply for this grant and get this as a state line technical rescue team. Well, that state line technical rescue team is now kind of dispersing. So, now it's more mainly relied on the full-time departments in this community. So, with that, the City of Beloit, it just hasn't been able to build the team up like the City of Janesville have. I think you said, what, 16 or 18 personnel on the state task force team, where the City of Beloit only has three. So, to be able to give this piece of equipment to Janesville Fire Department and allow them to be able to respond to our community, their community, and the entire county with trained personnel at every call is huge. And they had, we had a technical rescue call. It was a couple of years ago. There was a plane in a tree. And the Janesville Fire Department, we brought the squad up, but the Janesville Fire Department is the one that led that training. Madison Fire Department came down, and they didn't actually do much of anything because Janesville Fire Department had that going. So, this is not going anywhere. This is staying in our community. This is going to be able to respond to our community. And it's just, it's awesome to see the relationship that we have with the Janesville Fire Department. And they're not just going to just take it and run. They're going to actually keep us together and training with them. We do have three people that are on the state task force team, myself being included. And we also have three people that are interested in being on that team. So, we're building our team down here, but they already have it. So, this is a great opportunity for the entire region, so.
Thank you very much. May I please have a motion to approve the resolution?
Somo.
Moved by Counselor Terrell, seconded by Vice President Forbeck. Are there any questions or discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Counselor Blakely.
Thank you so much. Thanks for waiting all evening, too, gentlemen. Well, I just wondered if you could just describe in a little detail what exactly this piece of equipment is?
Yeah, so the squad is a 2006 Salisbury squad. It has roll-up doors on the sides. It has, when we purchased it, was $300,000 just for the vehicle itself, and then it had over $300,000 worth of equipment on there. This equipment is able to do high-angle, low-angle rescue. It's able to go into, like 9/11, when the buildings collapsed. It has equipment in there to drill holes, use cameras to view in there if there's anybody in that cavity. A lot of stuff that's actually going on overseas right now with that, the earthquake that happened. The squad has all that stuff. So, has extrication equipment on there for multiple different types of extracations, like what we saw on the interstate, where there was multiple different vehicles involved. This vehicle actually has equipment to do multiple different types of extracation. So, it's just, there's so much you can do. Trench rescue, high-angle, low-angle rescue, building collapse, like I kind of talked about. So, there's, it's just an endless toolbox is what it is for us.
Sounds wonderful. Thanks, Deputy Chief.
Any other further questions? I just wanted to mention in the staff report, it says that this has no negative impact on our budget, and more importantly, it helps us to be a good regional partner, so.
Yeah, that's for sure. And Janesville actually has a replacement in their budget already for it. So, when it gets to the point where it's just not able to be used anymore, the Janesville Fire Department is going to build that, another piece of apparatus to supply all that equipment. So, this isn't going anywhere. This is going to stick around for a really long time, so.
Thank you. At this time, we have a motion and a second to, did you have some words you wanted to add?
Yeah, I'm just full of goodness tonight. I just wanted to say, it's very touching, it's very rewarding. It accomplishes so much to have our communities working together on this. Thank you.
Really awesome.
That's fine. At this time, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
In your polls, say nay. The motion passes.
12C, the City Council may adjourn into closed session pursuant to Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E, Wisconsin statute, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, namely, one, to consider release of maintenance responsibility over a public parking lot at 3A B C Parkway, the City Council will not reconvene into open session.
May I please have a motion to adjourn into closed session? Moved by Vice President Forbeck.
Second.
Second by Counselor Terrell. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
In your polls, say nay. The motion passes. This ends our City Council meeting for this evening.